Good evening, everybody. It's seven o'clock and I'd like to make an announcement that tonight our chairman is unavailable and so I'm acting as chairman for this meeting. I know we've got a quorum. Nelson, I think we should appoint you to sit in place, or Bob, so you're a voting member. Everybody else is a voting member, so we will proceed. I was going to say, but since there's no, I don't think there's anybody else here who needs to know, but in fact, items four and five from Mark Rivet will not be discussed tonight. He's asked for a continuance and that's been agreed, I believe, by the staff, although we'll have to vote on it. The next meeting for the planning board will be October the 16th, 2018, at 7:00 PM in this room. And could I mind, everybody, that as Xena is not here today, if you do speak to them things, and when we do the voting, we need to make sure and we make it quite clear who has proposed and seconded the meeting, so Xena can do the attendance. I'll think we'll first move to the Planning and Zoning Administrators' Report. Robert, what have you got for us?
Nothing tonight.
That's a good evening. It sounds like it's gonna, the way it's gonna go. So we move on to item three, which is Peter Olivier and Sherry Olivier, the applicants, and SIIM04 Realty, who's the owner, continued review for acceptance and consideration of a waiver of full site plan review to permit employee parking for an off-site landscaping business, as well as employee and tractor-trailer parking for an off-site moving business, both of which are in addition to the existing onsite restaurant use. Parkland is located at 75 Daniel Webster Highway in the I-1 Industrial and Aqua Conservation Districts, Taps Map 2B Lot 028. This item is continued from June 19th, July 17th, and September 4th, 2018 meetings. Please sign your names in the book, and then when you're ready, please carry on. Yeah, that's better. Pull it here closer to you, so we can all, the people at home wanna hear you as well.
Right. My name is Sherry Olivier. I'm the applicant. I'm representing SIIM04 Realty and Richard the Mover. We've come to you with a new plan, with your suggestions. We took it back to our engineer and looked at what the proper turning radius would be and how we could maneuver the trucks to the rear of the parking, instead of the front, where your concerns were you didn't want people walking in between. So if you, I know it's hard to see on your small copies. I did bring a larger copy.
Would you like to take the microphone, Sherry, and then talk to us with that, so we can have you explain what you're gonna put in and where you're gonna put it?
Sherry? Make sure you cut the light on.
Yeah, the light's on. Thank you. Alright, so we are keeping with the one-way enter and exit. All of the parking spaces will be to the front, and the truck parking will be in the back. So we would enter from here and be able to swing in back into the diagonal spaces. It makes for an easier, I know we had talked about vertical, but there just wasn't enough swing radius for it. So to keep it safe coming in and out, we will enter back to the diagonal spaces and exit right through here. We also put a post and chain going across, and there's three additional employee parking on the end. And then all of the parking spaces are numbered to what you were looking for, for proposed parking. We will extend the parking spaces right through here and through here. The original plan did not follow what it had had, so it was confusing when you looked at it beforehand. So I tried to outline it the best I could and rewrite. So if you add up all the spaces, it should be to what you're looking for. The gravel would stay the same, all the lines would get painted, and I think those spaces will get added right in here, too.
You've added lighting, as we also suggested, I hope.
So the lighting comes right through here, so we'll make sure that those lights are on a timer and they kick on every night.
So how many, with the diagonals that I can see, and obviously I'm a little distance, you've got quite a lot, you've got, seem to have more than you originally suggested you were gonna need.
I don't think that we'll need all of these, but you don't want the cars parking in between. There's no...
Don't disagree at all.
Right. So I think the only way to do it is this, as it's laid out now.
And when P&amp;L people are parking, are they gonna use the diagonal strip, or are they gonna try and park in the center of the building?
So they'll park at the back of the building, the parking spaces located throughout here.
And that will be enough for both the restaurant and for P&amp;L?
Right. And again, P&amp;L will be off-hours and won't interfere.
Okay. Well, you've obviously listened to what we asked, and it seems to me you've come up with a solution that seems to address the issues. What else does anybody else on the board have any comments? Go on, Nelson, please.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I am troubled by this plan submittal. And I understand that the applicant has worked to make it fit and may all fit, but to accept this as a plan for the site, I find is something we, as a board, cannot or should not do. It's just so confusing, and it has so much information on it, from the original approval, the modified approval, the as-built, and what they're trying to do now. And I can't read this thing. And I did go in and read the bigger one in the town hall, and that wasn't a whole lot better. So I'm not prepared to accept this as a submission without a real cleanup of the site plan, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
Okay.
Anybody else have any comments, please? Michael? By the way, thank, it's nice to see you here, Michael. You have been sorely missed.
It's good to be back, thank you. Glad to have you been missed, too. So just if you would explain to me, for my absence, how you guys are just addressing the change in the use here. So it looks like it was a vegetated area, now it's gonna be a gravel lot. How it's gonna be graded, you know, if you're gonna be managing any runoff for that?
Sure, it's actually existing right now.
It exists?
Yeah. It's been like that for, what, like 15 years, maybe more than that? It was originally supposed to be a paved parking lot that they were gonna extend in the back, and then they never did. So we came in and took it over as first P&amp;L parking, employee parking, and then we parked the trucks in front of the employee parking. So there's, I mean, as it stands right now, if you look at, I don't know if you had a chance to look at the first plan?
No.
Okay. So the first plan, this is actually how it's laid out right now, is that the trucks are all parked right through here, and employee parking for P&amp;L is all against the end of the property.
Okay. Yep. So, I guess kinda going back a little bit to Nelson's comment, there's a note here that says "after removal of top soil," so that's an older note?
It had been removed and it's gravel.
It's gravel, yep.
So what I can do is go in and clean it up a little bit. I did it with this one after the fact, and I outlined where it had changed and kinda, you know, removed some stuff that was not there when we had talked to the engineer.
Yeah, I would even make the note, you know, even like for these things that, you know, say "after removal," you know, putting something that says, you know, "completed" or, you know, whatever. Just so it gets cleaned up as to that's not what the current plan is.
Current plan, okay.
Or if you were to do a different color even, sometimes that can help.
Okay.
It would help. No, not color.
Anybody else have any thoughts, comments?
Sherry, what type of trucks are being parked there?
Tractor-trailer and straight trucks.
What's the combination?
It's one tractor, several trailers, and two straight trucks.
Okay.
Let me give you, the board, the actual what's there tonight. There are six 40-foot trailers, there are two box trucks, which must be about 30 to 35 foot long. There is one very small trailer, the sort that somebody, a handyman would come around behind doing work at your house. And there's a trailer with what looks like a large air conditioning pack on it. I don't know what it is, I just looked. But that's what's there tonight. So effectively, six, eight, they need 10 spaces, which is probably what you've got there, I'm guessing.
I have nine, but the utility trailer wouldn't take up a full space. So if we did this, that we would utilize one...
You're quite right. Your utility trailer wouldn't need the full space.
Right. It's only like eight feet or something like that.
Taking your, not your point, Nelson, what do you, are you requesting the applicant to do?
I would like to see a plan that shows what they wanna do here, and not what they should've done 10 years ago, when other people owned it.
Okay.
Okay? That's my desire, to see it taken as-built for what's been built, and then what's gonna be added, and it clearly identifies it. That's the kind of a plan that's going forward, somebody will wanna look at. If they pull this out of the file five years from now and look at it, I don't see how anybody's gonna tell what is supposed to be on the site. So...
Michael? Just as a follow-up to that, so, again, Robert, as far as the, you know, the process, so the full-site plan review has been waived and that's been accepted, correct?
The board has not yet accepted the plan as completed.
We haven't even accepted this at all, because before, what Sherry has brought to us before was beyond our ability to recognize what was going on, other than going and looking at it for which you could see, but the plans never really showed what was physically there.
Okay. So then, and then just in perspective of the department's requirements for, if a waiver is granted for full-site plan review, is there a minimum standard that you guys set?
We don't, our standard practice is to give applicants the previously approved site plan and allow them to mark it up. The staff memo that's gone out a couple times has a lot of suggested notes from staff, one of which would maybe address one of your concerns, is that all improvements shown on the plan, a note saying that all improvements shown on the plan have already been constructed or completed, just gotta note that. But there's several other notes that would help clean up exactly the purpose and intent of the plan, because that language is kinda carrying over from the previous. But I think that's the standard practice that we do for waivers of full-site plan.
Understood. May I comment?
Please, please do so.
Thank you. For the record, my name's Eric Brandt. I'm the owner of P&amp;L Landscaping. I own the property just to the north of this property, and it would be my employees' vehicles that were, we've been parking over there for about 10 years, since we moved in next door. With the previous owner, we had an arrangement that we could utilize some parking in the back, and with the current owner, actually, so we're in the third ownership of this, actually, of parking some vehicles in the rear. And it appears that, once the tractor-trailers came in, it kinda brought a whole new meaning to it, when it wasn't just vehicular traffic in there. So from the best of my knowledge, as we kinda go back a few ownerships with this, I can appreciate all the questions and comments that everybody's bringing to light on the current site plan. When we looked at the site plan here, everything, to the best of my knowledge, had already been completed that was on the current approved site plans that were on there. So as we were going through and trying to do the request for the waiving, I believe is the proper term, for the full-site plan review, basically what we were trying to do is go through and just mark up and work with engineers, but trying to help keep our costs down, because it can get very costly. And at the end of the day, all we're really doing is talking about, you know, where are we remarking parking spaces. We're not really changing the site, it was already gravelled, all of that other site work had already previously been done, just a matter of what's the best layout. So as we came back from our last visit here and we talked about, it didn't make sense to have the tractor-trailers and then parking behind, wasn't a very good, you know, walking path and layout for customers and everybody, especially at nighttime. So we tried to take that back, and as the acting chair tonight made comment, we really did listen to the comments that were presented to us last time. So we're not really trying to do much more, aside from, okay, this is how we can, you know, re-stripe the parking lot, basically.
Go on, Mark.
So, working with engineers, so would they be able to take this plan, scan it in, and then draw over the top of it, so that it's a much clearer plan for us?
So the engineer that we use actually is, he works not with computers. He's kind of old-school, so he does everything by hand. So he would not be able to do that. I can clean it up the best I can, but I wouldn't be able to start with like a clean slate and kinda go over it. And that's what we discussed with Robert in the beginning, is not taking the cost from affordable to starting a whole new plan, and, you know, it's really not affordable for the both of us.
Sure, but, I mean, it's a pretty simple process, right? I mean, nowadays, you wouldn't need your engineer, and so you'd do it, I guess is where we're going, to some degree. We're just looking for a good sketch, is really what it comes down to. So anybody who's savvy with computers, you know, a high school student would be really good at it, you know?
We could even, on the simpler side, we could go through, get some good tracing paper, trace it, and get a final copy, too, and even avoid in the computer side of it, if we can't find somebody that can do that. Yeah, we're just really trying to keep the cost of this down, instead of spending, instead of spending thousands of dollars on, you know, just the document that's gonna show where the parking is. But we can definitely work on getting it cleaned up, if there could be a conditional approval or something like that tonight, based on, you know, getting a newer plan in the file. We would appreciate that, just so we at least know we're going down the correct direction.
Well, I have to admit, when I first saw this, when I picked this up this morning, because in fact, the post office didn't get the plan to me today, I find it was very difficult, because all this writing's all over it. But I'm, Nelson, would you feel comfortable if they took that approach and produced from a tracing, they traced the essential elements of the plan, marked the building clearly, because frankly, the hardest thing to see is where the building is? Would that begin to satisfy your suggestion?
Well, perhaps. I would like to see it first, before I accepted it. In other words, right now, it's just not acceptable. And I think that there's a lot that needs to get changed on here, or left out, to show the present configuration of, as it's built, and where these stripes are, and then, I don't know what this dotted line through here is, but, oh, existing and new, okay. I guess I'd have to say no, is the simple answer to your question. If you're just talking about making a tracing of this, you'd have to leave out, if you did, you'd have to leave out a lot of stuff. And I'd like to see that before I said I would accept it. That's, that's where I'll go.
Okay, I hear what you're saying.
I think getting rid of some of the clutter. There's a lot of clutter in here that, at this point, we don't care about.
Okay.
If you can get rid of that, so that we can see what we do care about...
So my question is, is just the outline of the building, to go over it, is that enough for you? Because you're saying no.
The new parking spaces, and get rid of the old parking spaces.
The new parking. So what we'll do is, we'll have a clear sheet go across that's clearly marking where all the parking spaces is, and where their ratio to the building is.
Yep.
Okay.
And get rid of the old ones. There's a lot of parking spaces that don't exist.
There's odd trees and things in places where there ain't no trees.
No trees.
Get rid of the clutter.
Get rid of the clutter, and all the, all the sort of hieroglyphics, and what, I mean, it could be in Greek, for all I could see when I read this one, but obviously a bigger...
I think you're okay.
Okay.
But we just need to see it in a point where we can understand what it really is.
Sure.
So you run the right track.
Okay.
And someone in the future can understand it. We've all talked about it and gone over it, but if somebody pulls this out of the file...
In 10 years, they're not gonna know anything, so do something better for us.
So, before we get away from that, I'd like to ask if you could indicate for me where the exit is, because it looks like you drew a line right across the exit, and I really don't understand where the traffic flows.
Sure. There actually is an enter and exit sign on the, both the curbs, and it comes in and goes right through the automobile.
You drew a dark line right across there, and some parking in that upper-left section there, where you exited from the space back to the street. So where exactly is one driving?
Sure. Automobile traffic for the restaurant will be right through here.
Okay.
Traffic for the straight trucks.
That last span of your finger went right across one of your dark lines. What was the point of that dark line?
Oh, you're talking about here, I'm sorry. That is the line where he had highlighted the original, I think, and he made a mistake here. So you can see on the plans...
Hence our problem.
Yeah, I think you're just demonstrating, Sherry, to us why the members of this board...
No, I agree, it's not right. Alright, so I will take care of this line, right out here.
But is that supposed to be parking above it, there, as well?
That will be parking above it, so we're going to expand...
So there's something...
There is a handwritten note for, it looks to be from the engineer, that says pavement to be added, pointing to that, so that's...
That's, I think, what he meant.
Again.
Get rid of all the...
It looks like the current engineer's handwriting, not the previous.
Just get rid of all the, all the writing all over the place. It makes it impossible.
I think we definitely all agree the same on that. My question that I would bring back would be, does the, does the concept work for everybody? Because I, we're both happy to go through and make sure we have a nice, clear plan, but we wanna make sure we're doing it on the right plan that's gonna work for everybody at the same time, as far as the layout, the parking, the routing and everything, or do we need to kinda go back to the drawing board and come up with a new concept?
So the question you're asking, I think, translated is that, if you present a cleaned-up version of the plan that Sherry has on the board there, with clearly marking where the building is, clearly indicating the parking, to the sort of standards that we normally expect to see, will we buy into the plan? That is, I think, your question.
Yes.
I think the answer is yes, but with what you've presented us with so far, the answer is no.
Okay.
It just needs to be cleaned up. I think what you're describing to us, as far as I'm concerned, is acceptable, but what you're presenting to us so far is not.
Understood.
Does that help?
Yes. Yes, thank you very much.
There are a couple of underlying things going on here, as we've talked about over the past couple of meetings. One, you're trying to put three different uses on one lot, which normally we wouldn't want to see, because we can't control that when it goes to the next owner, you know, what three different uses are there, if we suddenly say it's okay to do that. And so it's, it's a little bit nerve-wracking, if you will, from a planning board to project what's happening five years from now, based on an approval that we make today. And so, I think, listening to what Bob was saying last time, and listening to Lynn and others here, there's a way to go forward, and you've improved things a lot by moving the trucks out of where folks are gonna normally be walking and stuff like that. And that's probably even better for you, to have them backed out of there and out of the way. It's just that we're concerned about, one, accepting a plan that isn't really well-drawn-out, and two, this ongoing effort to try and put this mixed use in there. I mean, we wouldn't wanna put a fuel-oil delivery in with a restaurant or something like that, and just because of the potentials for contaminations and stuff like that. And that's where the concerns come in, if you suddenly are allowed to do truck parking, what kind of trucks? And if you're allowed to do other shared parking, because the hours are off, you know, are you really gonna have enough parking and stuff? So, anything you can do to help raise that comfort level, that this is a well-thought-out and controlled concept, will definitely help us. But you've made some great strides in the directions that you're going, from my perspective.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you.
Go on, Nelson, please.
Just to sort of address Tom's point, I think if you're willing to limit it, limit those uses as part of the approval, I think that would make Tom feel more comfortable, and me too, for that matter, for the issue that he raised. I mean, it's clearly some landscape, some parking of passenger cars for a neighboring landscaping business, and number of trucks for a moving business, and your restaurant. So I think if...
Moving trucks, worrying chemicals...
Yes, non-storage, yeah. And make those things clear in notes on the plan. Those would, those would give him a great comfort level, and me too.
And not store chemicals.
Well, I know, you wouldn't, but the next guy...
Right, the next guy. No, I completely understand where you're coming from.
Once we approve this, you can sell it.
It's a done deal.
Yeah.
One more comment?
Please, Mark.
Yeah, so when I see this, I think about Skip's Marina.
Please.
And the turnaround that the fire department wanted.
Yeah.
Did you guys discuss that previously, or has that been, or has the fire department?
Fire department has reviewed, and they have no concerns with their ability to maneuver a truck inside.
Great, perfect.
Thank you for raising the issue, and thank you for the answer, so we know that one. So, if I understand the feeling of the board, what we're really saying to you, Sherry, and let's face it, we know you're already doing this, so let's start from that point. We are basically asking you to come back with a cleaned-up plan, so we can clearly see what's going on, with the, some of the limitations, I think in Robert's memo, he addressed one or two of the issues, so those might be, could be incorporated. And we'd sort of look for a continuance, I suppose we're going to give one, to a period of time. How long is it gonna take you to do what you've talked about today?
30 days?
Hmm?
30 days?
So first meeting in November?
First meeting, November.
November, okay.
Alright, so we'll give a continuance on this map. Robert?
Couple of things. One, public comment, if anybody has any.
Oh, alright, sorry.
And also, I don't know, it may be premature to touch on this, but if you're having them go back to revise the plan, the required number of parking spaces for the three uses on the site comes to a total of 81, and they're showing 65. The board hasn't had any discussion on that point so far. Now, being a waiver of full-site plan, they can certainly, you guys can incorporate that as part of any approval you might grant, or you can discuss whether that number of spaces is appropriate. Kind of put something on the record so far, so they know that they're going in the right direction for that, that point of it.
I think that would be part of anything that they would bring forward, revise to us, they would address that issue.
Nelson?
Well, I guess I'd like to know why we have this discrepancy. You have come up with a number based on some analysis, right? Can you explain that to us?
The 81 spaces, and I broke it down in the previous memo I had done, is based off of the town's parking requirement calculations, and this is spelled out in great detail in my July 9th memo, and that's where we're coming up with. It basically amounts to 72 passenger car and nine tractor-trailer, for the total of the 17 spaces that P&amp;L wants, the nine tractor-trailers that Mrs. Olivier wants, and also the parking required for the restaurant.
But that is making the assumption that everything is there all at the same time?
That's just, that's how I have to do it.
Yes, I understand how you've gotta do it.
That's what I wanted to know.
Now, they're, of course, proposing that P&amp;L's spaces can double, because the hours are different, so you may wanna have them add notation to the plan about how...
Yes, you're quite right, yeah.
And that may require a waiver based on that assumption.
But are we getting, are we letting the applicant have the general feeling, and this is really addressed to my colleagues, that we're going to understand the relationship between the spots being used, both for P&amp;L and for the restaurant?
If they properly identify it, I think they need to properly identify it as part of the site plan, that one of the other conditions, not only is it a neighbor using it, but it's a part-time use. It's not, these uses don't all occur simultaneously.
Okay.
And that's gotta be one of the conditions on here.
Okay. So I will add that to this map?
Yes, please, that would have to go on.
So I don't, I just don't think it's possible to get that many spaces in with what we're trying to do, but I think what we have here is, I mean, a good starting point.
But documenting...
But documenting, that's what it's for?
Is what needs to be done.
Okay.
Again, going forward, to somebody else.
Right.
Doing that.
Can do.
And as part of the edits you guys make, the memo that we sent out in preparation for this meeting has one of the numbers in there, technical comments from staff. You'll see a bunch of notes that we want added to the plan, purpose statement, sewer service, basic general notes.
And a lot of this clutter that's on the, on the existing plan, I think you could probably get rid of it.
Basically erase those and replace them with the notes that I spelled out in my memo, type of thing.
Work with community development, they'll help you generate what we need.
Absolutely.
Because I think they understand.
Perfect.
Okay, does that satisfy you?
Yes.
So we look forward to seeing you on the...
Public hearing?
Hmm? Oh, yeah. Does, open this for public comment. Does anybody in the public wish to make a comment?
I'm just curious where P&amp;L's located.
P&amp;L is located one spot, Merrimack side of the site.
79 Daniel Webster Highway.
Oh, could, and could we have your name for the record, please, sir?
Sir, it's Richard Fox.
Well, fill it out before you go, if you would just fill out the site for it. So you wanted to know where it is and we've told you where it is. Can I have somebody make some suggestion then, please?
Do you need a motion to continue this?
Yes, please.
I will so move.
A motion to continue the application till November the-
Sixth.
Sixth? Has been made by Lynn Christensen.
Wait, 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 wait.
What's wrong?
Are we going to have the meeting on the sixth? Do we have to?
Yes, you do.
November sixth?
November sixth.
That's election day.
I'm aware that it's election day.
Well, you've got applicants who have submitted applications for that and items are continued to it, so yes, you have to have a meeting that day.
So I will, I will submit that I will not be here that night.
We understand that Lynn, you'll be busy counting all the votes. You won't be here either. Well, hopefully we'll, we'll, we'll round up a quorum.
Okay.
Michael, you've got to be here that night, just take a note. Can I have a second for Lynn's motion, please? Michael, second it, thank you, Michael. So the matter is continued till November the sixth with no further notice to anybody. Good luck, look forward to you following on all the suggestions you've got this evening and thank you for your time this, this evening.
Good progress, good progress.
Thank you very much, everybody.
We got a vote, right?
Yes, we got a vote.
Oh, sorry, we should have a vote. All in favor say of Lynn's motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anybody against? No, good. So it's one, six, six nil to continue the matter.
We'll get him trained yet.
Thank you, we'll get me trained eventually, just that I don't get enough practice. The next two items we'll take is one, this is Mark Rivet, who's the applicant and owner, continued review for acceptance and consideration of a final approval for a lot line adjustment. The parcels are located at four twenty-five Daniel Webster Highway, two and four railroad avenue, and an unnumbered parcel off railroad avenue in the C two, general commercial and aquifer conservation, flood hazard conservation, elderly and town center overlay district. Tax map, five D four lots zero seventy-seven, zero seventy-eight, zero seventy-nine and eighty, and this was continued from the September fourth, two thousand eighteen meeting. And we also have a continued review for consideration, acceptance of a site plan of the construction of a one thousand eight hundred and ninety square foot garage and function room addition and associated site improvements. The parcels were, I've already said, so I won't go and repeat myself. This also was continued from September the fourth, two thousand eighteen. And we have a memo from, please, we respectfully request, due to the outstanding zoning items, we request this application be continued to the November sixth, here you go, planning board meeting, don't, so, can I have a motion on to continue as requested by the applicant?
I'll so move.
Motion proposed by Lynn Christensen, seconded by Nelson Disco, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Six nil, six zero zero. Thank you.
Did you do two with, with one stone there?
Yeah, we've got, we've used one motion to kill both, to move both things on.
He's not completely trained yet.
Right, we then have item six, discussion, possible action regarding other items of concern. We have a memo from Charles Morgan, the applicant, and five twenty-six W Daniel Webster Highway LLC, the owners, extension request for final approval for a site plan to construct a twenty-one thousand and sixty-nine square foot, single-story facility in a two-bay auto dealing detailing shop, originally approved by the board on five fifteen eighteen. And I have this memo from E. Eric C. Mitchell and Associates, on behalf of my client, Morgan Storage, I respectfully request a six-month extension to the conditional approval granted on May the fifteenth. Many of the precedent, precedent conditions in the conditional approval have been met, but we need additional time to coordinate and address the remaining conditions. Although a six-month extension was requested, it is anticipated that the precedent conditions will be made within a couple of months. I'm looking for a motion.
I will so move.
Motion made by Lynn Christensen, approved by Nelson Disco, all in favor.
Seconded by-
Seconded, sorry.
Details.
Anybody, sorry, anybody want to make any comments? Can I take a vote in hands, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Six nil nil, so that's been approved. Moving on, any other discussion by anybody else that wants to raise matters? Robert, nothing? Nobody else want?
Two, two quick things.
Please.
Robert, do you have any updates on the projects we talked about last, last time?
Could you remind us?
Flatley and Executive Park, like just where they're at, kind of, seeing what's going on?
No, no change. We've had, maybe Flatley's under construction and Executive Park, we have not yet had a pre-construction meeting with, so.
And I would just bring to everybody's attention, perhaps both here and at home, that the Department of Transportation are holding a meeting tomorrow at seven o'clock in the Merrimack High School to tell us all about the plans for widening the, the Everett Turnpike from Nashua to Manchester. I have seen the plans, just so you know, it's, they're proposing it in two bites effectively. Bite one is going from exit ten to-
Three bites.
Two bites?
Three bites.
Three bites.
It's effectively two.
It's two chunks, three bites. They're going to go from exit eight to exit ten, which of course is a very short distance, but has the major problem of getting over the Penny Chalk Waterworks flow area, which is that nasty little bridge. And then the other chunk is taking it from exit eleven all the way up to Manchester and that's going to be done in two chunks by the look of it. I don't think anybody's going to be particularly surprised at what the plans are, but I don't know what it's going to cost and how long they're going to take to do it. So if you want to go, we'll be at Merrimack High School tomorrow night at seven o'clock.
Alister, just curious, how's the, how's the sign thing going? Getting up on your crusade?
Question for staff, he's referring to the banner signs.
Oh, the banner signs, my, my thirteen, eighteen-
Yeah, just curious how that's all working out for you?
So we sent all the letters out and we are, the phone calls have been trickling in from businesses on those and some of them have started responding by taking them down. Many complaints and hemming and hawing.
Okay.
Few have taken them down, few have not.
One, one, one particular place, no names, no pactoral, has actually increased the number of banner signs, but let's just assume that was a temporary aberration and they will deal with it. I also hope, incidentally, that the, after November the sixth, we can see a reduction in the number of signs littering the town on behalf of the various candidates. I know they're allowed to put them there, but I hope we can ask or persuade them, and I look at Lynn for that.
Not me.
You're, you're the moderator, you just tell them.
That's above my pay grade.
You can still tell them. Okay, the only other matter we have in front of us is a very large minutes of the meeting dated September the eighteenth, twenty eighteen.
I move we approve as printed.
That's from Lynn, anybody else want to comment?